Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, July 23rd, 2018 at 5:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I'd like to call to order and request roll call, please.
Bolling.
Here.
Boudreau. Carpenter.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And State.
Here, thank you. Item three is a public appearance by Jamie Bush, who is not here yet. We'll take that when he gets here. Item four is approval of minutes. There are none before us tonight. So we'll go to item five, approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the amount of $188,627.56 for approvals. Need a motion second, please?
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Questions?
And I got to disappoint Jeff and Lisa tonight, and I don't have any questions.
What?
That's okay.
I'm writing this in the minutes.
Okay.
Document that. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, again, we have a motion second to approve vouchers in the amount of $188,627.56. Roll call, please.
State.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Carpenter.
Yes.
Bolling.
Yes.
Thank you. That carries. Item six is community input. Is there anyone who would like to address the board tonight? Just come to microphone, please. That way it picks up for TV. And welcome. You just need to identify yourself, please, with the address for the record.
My name is Don Toppe. We live at 54 Piddo in Lake Kimble Road, Corner Blake and Bone Glen Road. And I know you're going to have a meeting, closed meeting, tonight on the condition of that road. So I won't talk much about that, but we live there, we see a lot, and it's just a matter of time for something that gets killed in the condition of that road. My, our suggestion is, I know that it's a lot of money to repair it, I'm sure it is, but we're thinking, if nothing else, do something, drop the speed limit until it gets fixed. It is, it's going to happen. We've seen it Saturday. Bicycles, almost accidents. It happens all the time out there. That's what we got to say for now, until you guys talk more about that, but I think lowering that speed limit is going to cover your butt.
Yeah. We have tried to do that, and the county won't do it.
They won't?
No.
Reason?
I think they said they do a count of average speeds. I think that's what people are going to drive, so that's what they post the limit at, something like that, something ridiculous, as far as I was concerned. Jeff?
I think we would, I think it'd be worthwhile for us to at least evaluate with them again, and, you know, might maybe collect more speed data. And, you know, now that we have this, we did have the feasibility study report. I know we gave them a copy of that, but, and now with Brinhale being pushed through, there's enough activity that's occurring out there, depending, and then also depending on what the village board decides to do and the town board decides to do. Yeah, I think it's always good to revisit it. I've talked with Dawn, right? Dawn on a couple occasions, and, you know, I think it's always good to ask.
And I would encourage you to contact the Dane County Highway Commissioners, Pam Dunphy, D-U-N-P-H-Y.
Does anybody got the, I didn't get my down.
I don't.
And I was just going to ask you that.
Yeah, I don't know her. And if there are others out there that feel that way, I would ask you to have them contact her too.
What was the name?
Pam, the last name is Dunphy, D-U-N-P-H-Y.
And she's with the?
Dane County Highway Commissioner, yeah. She heads up the roads in Dane County.
Dawn, if you email me, I will send you that contact information.
Okay.
An email and everything.
Good, I will, I will, yeah.
When was the last time it was reviewed?
I think within a year.
You mean for, for condition or for speed?
For speed, yeah.
Yeah.
That I don't know.
I think when the last year or so. We've been asked two or three times to drop that speed limit, and we always get turned down. And it's a bit puzzling to me, because if you drive 14 to Lacy Road, and then head east on Lacy Road, and turn left to go into Madison toward Rimrock, they recently dropped that from 50 to 40.
Right. I've seen that.
And I'm thinking, why do they do that and not do this on Lincoln Road?
That's a much wider road.
Yeah.
CC is not all 55 down through there anymore. That got changed.
Yeah.
Well, even like from Marona to Madison, that went on 35 for a long time, and that's, I mean, yeah, look at, so it's, oh, thanks.
Yeah, so, again, and I would encourage you, when you contact Pam Dunphy, to do it via email. Then there's a record of it.
Okay.
And to get all, anybody out there that would like to do that, have them do the same thing. Maybe make some little cards, as bikers go by, stop them, give them a card, to email Pam Dunphy. And I'm going to contact her about why they did the road by, you know, 14, and they won't do this.
Exactly. Why do they do that? I thought maybe they did because of construction go on there, and they just did that, but who knows?
Yeah. They dropped it because it's safer.
Right.
That's my guess, and they should do the same on Lincoln Road.
What we're looking for, too.
Yeah.
Because people are taking, on the, 45 mile an hour, 55, part, in the village, part of it's in the village, 55 miles an hour, that's ridiculous.
Yeah.
You hit that, it's like a washboard, your car, it's all over, and all these trailers being pulled behind, we see it, and we had one blow up there, right in front of our house. They hit that, the truck, the thing went like this.
Yeah.
That could, that could have been really bad.
Yeah. We are in complete agreement with the speed limit decrease, so, good.
All right, that's all I got.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Anyone else at this time? Okay, so, we are going to jump ahead to item nine, reported committees. And this would go to Jeannie Carpenter, who will end up running a good share of this meeting, as it turns out, with the committee. So, number seven, on the fire ordinance. Jeannie, for the fire folks over here, I think would appreciate coming forward on that.
So, I'll just introduce this. So this is a review of updated information from the fire chief regarding ordinance number 18-05, revising the outdoor burning restricted regulations and possible recommendations to the village board. So, I would move that we hold our first reading of ordinance number 1805.
Second.
Do you, and we, it looks like we have a couple of letters in opposition, and those are, I think, one of them, just talked about for the record, was from a resident who has a large prairie in her backyard, and burns that every year to control the prairie grasses and flowers. And so I don't think we thought about that. And then another one is from another resident who has quite a few fruit trees, and likes to burn those instead of cutting and bundling them, and putting them in four-foot lengths. So, I don't know, Chief, if you have any thoughts on either of those issues?
I do. I guess we can address kind of the natural prairie and lawn restoration thing, first of all. The definition of what large to her might be small to me, I mean, it's like a 30 by 30 area, but it's still, in that lady's mind, it's a prairie. I think that's something that we need to look at. I've thought about it all along, but I think that the proposal that we have in front of us here is basically taking care of the open burning and getting rid of all that. I believe that, I would like to follow it up, like a lot of other municipalities have dealt with prairie restoration, very specific according to DNR statutes and DNR guidelines. A lot of those places also have a permit fee with that, because it takes some of the fire department's time going out, making sure it is a prairie, it's just not a garden in the backyard where people are rigging up leaves and think they want to burn their vegetation. That was actually a vegetable garden prior, to the prior year, in burning wood and all this other kind of stuff. So there's some man, sort of some labor-intensive hours, I should say, that needs to be part of that. I think that should be addressed totally separately, and open burning should be just dealt with accordingly, and taking care of the leaves and all that kind of stuff to really make it very clear. And then, for those limited cases that, you know, we probably have a handful, I don't know even if we've got three, to tell you the truth, that we've got areas where people like to burn off, that they're burning off gardens, and now they're saying it's prairies. We've just got to make sure that we address them accordingly. But I think the open burning stands for itself, and I think we should move that one forward the way it's written, personally. As far as the individuals that are talking about the pruning their trees, cutting their brush into, I think, Jeff, you guys needed four-foot piles or something of that nature. Again, this is a service that the village offers. I believe it's taking care of the residents accordingly, and I think it's just a few areas that some folks kind of like, I don't want to say tradition, but probably don't want to do that, they just want to burn the stuff in the backyard. You know, I understand for those folks, but at some point, you know, Oregon is a growing community, and I think we need to do the correct thing for open burning. I think that's all part of that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So what would be the procedure if a citizen had a prairie that they wanted to burn? Do they come to you, or where would they go to get that permit?
They would definitely come to the fire district and come to us. This is something, again, if I get the direction of the board that you want me to address prairies for the couple of prairies that we have that may be people that want to burn, we will write up a whole ordinance, be more than happy to do that. There's a lot of different templates out there. I've had them in different municipalities that I've served at, and we can bring that in. And I get, there, again, there is usually a dollar associated with that permit, because it, there are some personnel hours out in the field, going out, checking what the people checking, all this stuff. And the other thing that it really does, like, say, like the city of Madison and Monona and some of the other folks, they really talk about training. So now we're going to be looking at people to make sure that they had some official training with the DNR or someone else to be able to burn that prairie without the fire department there. So it really tightens it up from just anybody lighting anything in their backyard compared to what we had.
Right. Okay.
So, if we approve this ordinance, would you then bring forth something just to amend up regarding couriers?
I think it's a standalone, like what a lot of other municipalities have done, Steve, is basically wrote a natural, natural lawn or prairie restoration permit.
Okay.
And again, it would come through the village and that kind of thing. And that's going to be, in itself, is probably going to be about three pages long, because there's a lot of detail in there about doing some training and some classes and different things. Again, it's taking away, and I know people don't like to hear that, but we're about trying to do public safety and trying to keep Oregon a safe place. It's making sure that people have had classes to light their prairies in their backyards and have some official training, because the fire department is not involved in doing that.
Okay.
So, again, this is totally your call, but that's personally how I think we should address that.
When you talk about training, and I know you mentioned the DNR, with like, the Master Gardener program, or is it more than?
I'm not sure about that Master Gardener program, if that qualifies or not. That's one thing we're going to have to look at. I don't believe it does, but don't quote me on that.
Okay.
I'm not a master gardener personally, so.
Master arsonist.
Do you know, I mean, I'm looking for a ballpark here, because I know prairies come
in different sizes, but, you know, what kind of permit fee are we looking at? Are we talking 10 bucks, 50 bucks, 100 bucks?
Well, other municipalities I know are like 50 dollars. I don't think we have to go to 50 dollars. It's, again, whatever you guys decide you want to put at. I don't think 20 dollars is out of the question, something of that nature, and it's going to very much be limited to the spring of the year to burn off that annual grass that came from that growth the prior year. It's a very limited window. Prairie restorations usually probably take place, this year they probably could have took place March 1st to probably end of April, because everything was, it was an early spring and everything was dry, you know, things could have burnt off and things of that nature. So it's a very limited window. You're not going to have a prairie restoration or a burn of that nature in the growing season. Very limited window.
We also have, I mean, I can think of at least, RCI, I believe, does a prairie burn, and so that would have to fall under that as well.
RCI has a prairie burn, and it's usually, usually in conjunction with the fire department, the fire department usually takes care of that prairie burn for RCI.
But in order for us to be within our own.
With our own organs.
It's not a bad idea to add that in, but.
There are other ones, too, like at Lerner Park, the Rotary Club does one there.
You're right, Lerner, and then I could, well, Anderson's going to be outside of the village anyhow, but Anderson's been doing their prairie restoration.
We've got one other one that comes to mind, and that is our golf course on, over here at Foxborough, that burned off that area down by the, by their ponds down there. Occasionally, maybe like every other year or something of that nature. So there's, again, a handful, not a lot, but I think we need to address them and go accordingly. And again, the other thing that, let me also tell you, with prairie or lawn restoration burns, very limited window. Talk about wind and nuisance, okay? So they'll never let a prairie burn go if there's a wind mile over 10 miles per hour. So it's got to be zero to 10, basically, for it to happen. So they don't want to have any of the, say, problems or complaints that we've had other places where some fire's been burning and blowing at a couple subdivisions down.
Can I just say that the woman who wrote this letter is one of my neighbors, and I didn't even know she had a prairie in her backyard? She's only three houses away from me, so.
Yeah, she talked to me.
She's been doing it for years, apparently. I didn't even know. But, and with your permission.
Yep.
She said she worked with you in the past, so.
Yep, exactly.
But, I mean, she seems pretty conscientious, and I imagine there might be other people similar to her that would like to be able to do this, so.
Right.
If we, if we could add something to the ordinances, I'd be in favor of that.
And this is just the first reading, I believe.
Right, yes. So with regard to burning small prairies in town, do we want the chief to pursue that and bring something back? I'd like to see something in there.
Yes.
Yeah, we would.
We will do that, as a standalone document, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
That permit type thing.
Yep. Most definitely, we can do that.
Okay, so back to the first reading of the motion, which means it comes back to us again for a second reading and a vote to approve. So this just gives people another look at the ordinance before it comes back for final decisions. So is there any further discussion on the ordinance number 18-05?
Steve, I just have a quick thing. One thing we did send out a notice today on Facebook, and also through the e-notify to let people know that the first reading was tonight, that there would be a second reading later, so we're trying, and also I sent something to the Oregon Observer, asking that they may want to run an article on it, just to, so people are informed about it, because the main, the main impact really is to fire pits and fireplaces and stuff like, and barbecue grills.
And then, Chief, we have the other letter from another resident about burning what he prunes from trees, shrubs, and brush.
Yes.
Want to go through again what you think of that?
Again, personally, I think that anything that he prunes off of his trees, or brush that he cuts, that kind of stuff, Public Works, you guys take care of all that stuff. You guys got your chipping site, your drop-off sites. I think everything should go through there. I don't believe that we should be letting people burn that stuff in their backyards.
Yeah, I agree with that. Is that the consensus of the board? Okay, so that will stand that way, too, now. So we have that motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Got out of here a lot quick, and you thought you would.
Appreciate it. Until the next meeting.
You owe us.
Yeah, I'll remember that. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, so item seven is proclamations and announcements. Item A, any board comments? So we'll go to staff comments. And Mr. Grace has meetings listed for our budget meetings and upcoming meetings. I think she has anything else from staff tonight before we move on? Anyone? Okay?
Nope, should be it. All laid out here.
We will go to item A, communication miscellaneous business at the August 6th Village Board Meeting. Attorney, Village Attorney Matt Dragony will review the process for filling the village board vacant seat. So that will be coming up at our next meeting. Item B is informational, the dark store referendum for November, we approve by the Dane County Board. There'll be Connie White input on that.
May I say something on that really quickly?
Certainly can.
A group that I'm part of, the Oregon Area Progressives, is going to be going door-to-door, doing a nonpartisan canvas of the village, and we will be handing out more information on that referendum, along with other, like voter registration information and stuff, so people can watch for us coming to their door.
Okay, good. Thank you. So, item C, the youth center information for April, May, and June. Looking, God knows, the average attendance was around 25, if school was in session, I think that's a great number and a great service, and looking forward to that new building for that. Any other comments on the youth center?
Back under the upcoming means, were we supposed to pick a meeting date for September? You see, the board meeting is Tuesday, September 4th. I think Mike wanted us to select a date for the first board meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
My preference would be that we stick to Mondays, and just meet on Monday, the 10th.
Yeah, me, too. I can't make the 4th, so. We all okay with September 10th on that Monday? Okay?
Well, it's Monday.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Jeannie. So, item D, discussion possible action regarding peaceful heart facade grant extension. Recommended motion is to approve a 12-month extension to the facade improvement grant agreement between the village and Doris and John Deeds, dated 7/17/17. So low background, please, Jeff?
Do you want to motion first?
Yeah, we should, thanks.
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, this is just, they've been doing, they did their facade improvement to the south side of their buildings. They'd like to do something to the west side of the building, which faces Jefferson Crossing. However, they were waiting to do that until after we had done the parking lot and the underground electrical work, which is going to be tearing up back sidewalks and that type of stuff. So, as you know, that's been delayed until 2019. Their agreement says it expires at 12 months unless it's extended by the village board, so this is just a formality to give them that extension.
Okay, thank you.
I highly recommend we, you grant it.
Thanks. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E, discussion possible action on donating bikes from the police impound lot. Recommend a motion to approve donating bikes from the police impound lot to Dream Bikes. Motion, please?
I'll move that.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Think there's about 30 bikes? 30? Is there?
I would say probably 60.
Oh, okay.
Where do these bikes come from?
Everywhere.
No, but I mean, the force finds them?
Yeah, I think it's turned in as found.
Okay.
Yeah, they, we find them everywhere.
Discarded in parks, yeah.
Woods. Sometimes at the library, school.
So people never call looking for their bicycle?
No. In fact, we have one we recovered, we were able to pull the serial number off, and we tracked it back, and the woman didn't even realize her bike was gone. And then when we asked for a description to match it up, she had a hard time remembering what it looked like, because she never rides it. That's a lot of that.
It'd be hard to miss it if you never rode it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I assume that if there are really nice bikes, that you make an effort to try, I mean, you try to track them down, you've put forth an effort, you know, posted like, hey, come claim your bike, or, I don't know?
Yes, and, you know, I would say probably 80 to 90 percent of these bikes, you couldn't even ride anyway. The wheels are bent, missing parts.
That's why they're.
Rusty now. Yeah, so, I don't know if Dream Bikes is going to take a lot of them, but I'm hoping they take the good with the bad.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Any other questions? We have a motion of second to donate bikes in the police impound lot to Dream Bikes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item F, discussion possible action regarding constructing Public Works Cold Storage Building. Recommend a motion, accept the bid and approve the contract with Supreme Structures to procure and construct the Public Works Cold Storage Building with a contract amount of $575,500. Funding for the project to be from 2018 to 2019 borrowing.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, our continued bidding, we only received one bid from this. It was from Supreme Structures, which I was pleased to get a bid from them, because they're the contractor that is doing the youth center. So it is good from that standpoint. The site costs, site improvement costs did come out higher than anticipated by us and by our engineers. And so it was, it did exceed what we had originally budgeted for, planned for. However, we do believe we can split some of the costs, some of the overage, between the water fund and sewer fund, because we will be storing equipment out there. And then, we discussed, we met with Lisa and Mike this last week, and we talked about additional borrowing in 2019 that would cover the capital expense. This is a needed facility. We do want to build this to the size that, we've kind of maximized the size we can fit back there with the property we have, and we want to be able to build that size, you know, kind of looking in the future. I have no doubt we'll be able to fill it, but I want to be able to efficiently fill it over time with our equipment and everything, because we have added quite a bit of equipment in the last several years. Are there any questions on, I don't want to go on and on with anything, but.
Building's not up yet, right?
No.
That's a change.
Did you get that on this?
Any questions or comments? Okay, so we have the motion of second to accept the bid and approve the contract with Supreme Structures to procure and construct the Public Works Cold Storage Building with a contract amount of $575,500, funding to come to from the 2018 and 19 borrowing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item G, discussion possible action, the 2018 Emerald Ashmore Treatment. Village ash trees recommend a motion, accept the bid from True Green, the amount of $6,982 for the treatment of approximately 98 ash trees for EAB treatment, funding from the 2016 borrowing.
I'll move that.
Actually, I should say 2018 borrowing.
Okay, I was going to ask about that.
No, it's 16.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
They borrowed the money in 16.
For the ash tree stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Okay.
So we need a second, then.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
So, why is that bid so much lower than the other one?
It's a good question. Some would say, actually, I did not give numbers to either of them. I don't like doing that, you know, because it was not a, like a sealed bid type of thing. One had asked for numbers from the other, and I just said, just give me the number that you can do the work for. True Green came back, they may be, maybe wanting to aggressively do it to earn our business. Here's what I look at with our ash trees, and I talked to, actually, Jeff from Arbor Systems about this, too. You kind of get a point where after one or two treatment cycles, where you start getting tired of paying money towards trees that will eventually die. And, so I think, but I don't think we're there yet. I think we're at the point where we need to continue to look at this over the years, and hopefully we'll start replacing some of these trees that we're taking down, and with trees that are not going to be ash trees, and a, and a more of a diverse variety so that we don't have this problem in the future. But, you know, I think this is an opportunity for us to treat the trees, treat up to a hundred trees that we have for a very reasonable cost. These are trained professionals that do this, and so I have to trust on their ability to be able to do it and do it well for this price. So, I mean, I think it's a good opportunity to give to them.
Do they have a good track record, do you know, Jeff?
You know, they, they've, I think in here, they had the different communities they've, they've worked for here.
That's right.
I didn't do a lot of follow-up and calling. I, I liked the price, and I, I thought, well, this is a, you know, good opportunity. You know, and we still use Arbor Systems for a lot of stuff. We use them for taking down all of our trees and stuff, so, we're not, and like I said, they've done a nice job in the past. I just couldn't justify the more than double, almost three times the cost to do the...
Yeah, no, I like the idea of trying them.
Yeah.
Given the price and all the places they've worked. I'd forgotten that, I'd seen that list of places that they've worked.
Yeah.
Do you know if they use, like, the same chemicals?
It's like triot, yeah, it's like triage. I think it's kind of a play on words there, but, yeah. They, it's the same. And it's like talking to anyone else. If you talk to carpet cleaners, everyone says they do there differently. Some put lots of water, some don't put lots of water, but they all clean your carpet. And, you know, I think some would say that they do it differently than Arbor Systems, and this is why they're cheaper, so...
So the plan is to eventually discontinue this practice, right?
That will be up to the board. You know, I think, I think we'll evaluate this every year. We'll, we'll continue. The nice thing with both of these entities is as they, as they go around, they go up to a tree, if the tree already looks sick and dead and dying, they're not going to treat it, they're going to notify us that, you know, we need to take it off the treatment plan. So we'll continue to update our database, which I keep, you know, a good record of. So we'll, we'll just kind of continue to evaluate the condition of these trees, and after a while, you know, these large, 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 healthy trees, we want to keep, but it's the smaller ones that you start kind of feeling like maybe we should replace them.
So what are these under, how many inches in diameter?
These are all twelve inches, ten, ten to twelve inches or larger, up to forty inches.
Is there a plan going forward, and I, we probably talked about this a bunch of times, so I apologize, but is there a plan going forward to start replacing some of these trees, or...
I've been putting about ten to fifteen thousand dollars in each budget year to be replacing trees.
So we're gonna plant new trees next to, near these trees, or something like that?
Not always, but, but in, in certain locations, it makes sense. Cemetery, I'd like to keep planting some more trees. Terrace, terrace trees sometimes, not because the homeowners have a different idea of what they want to have out there. So we just kind of pick and choose, but like along, I replaced four along Cusick Parkway last year that were, were dead and dying and stuff, so. We're, we're picking and choosing, it's just with staffing, we, I wish we could spend more time planting trees, put it that way. Because I don't think we've used up our tree budget in the last couple of years.
Guess we'll talk about it more in budget time.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Any further questions or comments? So we have the motion second to accept the bid from True Green, an amount of six thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars for treating ninety-eight ash trees for EAB. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Item H, discussion, possible ask regarding wastewater treatment pump return activated sludge pump number four replacement, and the motion is to replace that, an amount of nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Has one asked what activated sludge is?
Sure.
That's all right.
Tell us though.
I brought a sample. I'm just gonna pass this around, no. But, no, this, this is, again, we are, we're going through the facilities plan, and that facilities plan will be identifying these for future budget years. We're, right now, we're just trying to catch up with as stuff fails. These are old pumps, and they fail. You can see in Cal's memo, which I think you did a nice job with, that we foresee this, probably replacing three of them this next year. So that'll be part of our budget for the senator, for the sewer portion, but this is kind of an immediate need. Just to remind you, we keep a, a equipment replacement fund. I believe it still has over a million dollars in that equipment replacement fund. That's a fund used specifically for this, so, makes sense to be able to use that for this.
Any additional questions or comments? So we have the motion second to replace the pump, and the cost of nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item nine, report to committees. Item A, special personnel, public safety and protection committee. This is trustee, trustee Carpenter, please.
Sure, so the first item comes as a unanimous recommendation from the committee, so I'll make the motion to deny Ashley Peterson's request for an operator's license.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? And again, for people watching, these things that come out of committee are discussed thoroughly at the committee level. That's why you may not see discussion here, because all our motioners are at these meetings. So we have that motion second to deny that operator's license. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item two.
This is discussion of possible action regarding revised operator's application. So at the committee, I moved, seconded by Jacobson, to recommend the approval of the revised application, removing the language applicant will not be able to reapply for a period of six months from the date of denial of application. That was a unanimous motion. So I would go ahead and make that motion tonight, that, we make that change. Can we discuss? I just had a quick...
Just need a second.
Oh, second, I'll second it.
Okay.
For discussion. I just, I just wanted to say, is that language gonna eventually be replaced with anything, or not at this time?
No, that, if you look at the sentence, it's just that the sentence will then, will end, it will, it will say, so we're asking them for ten, for ten years, and then applicants may be denied for falsification, right? So we, at the June fourth meeting, we had made that harsher. We had decided, or we had thought that we would automatically deny them if they left anything off, and we wouldn't let them apply for six months, and then we discussed it further, and thought that was too punitive, and we like the way that's happening now with the, the chief giving us the memos.
So they can just fix it and reapply right away?
Right.
Okay.
Generally, that doesn't happen, because if they've forgotten, forgotten something on it, it's usually somebody that disqualifies them anyway. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Any further questions or comments? Okay, so we have the motion second to recommend approval of revised application, removing the language applicant will not be able to reapply for a period of six months from the date of denial of application. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're gonna go to Jamie Bush.
Oh, sure.
He thought he had weird hair.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna read the agenda item, then you'll be all set here. So, it's item three A, public appearance. Discussion with Jamie Bush regarding consideration of amending alcohol licenses premises description for headquarters for the August fourth J.C. Park West fundraiser in the event of inclement weather, and there's possible board action on this. So, why don't you go ahead and explain for us and the public what you have in mind, Jamie?
Well, I thought, I don't know, I don't know, bridge and bucking rentals. Okay, so I had him put up in case we had rain, to be able to maintain the event. I wanted to have a tent to be able to put over the sand. We found out that the way that they hold a tent of that size, they have to drive these four-foot pilings into your ground, it would have broken the drain tile in my volleyball courts. So then all the sand would go rushing out into the, like, into our little pond, which I don't think anybody wants, and I do I. So obviously, we couldn't put it on the sand, there was no way to do it, like, the scope of it was just too big for what they could do. So then we started looking at other opportunities, and the only way that he can put that tent in is with these long spikes, but they can put them in asphalt. So he suggested putting it on the... Oh. Okay. He suggested putting it on the asphalt on the back, so literally just moving everything eighty, about ninety feet off the sand to that rear area of the parking lot. And then that way, they could anchor the actual tent in. And so this is only in the event if we have rain. The, the band Super Tuesday is actually, originally, we were gonna have a rain date of Sunday, but then they got booked on Sunday, so we couldn't do that. So Saturday had to be the day. So he said we could do the tent on the back portion, put the stage underneath it, and do everything just as it is, and then we fence in from the banquet facility, which is off there. So everyone would still enter the building, they could still be ID, they could still be bracelet, they would go into the banquet, that's where then all the food would be held, because it is, we do include food with the purchase. But then they go out and around, so they would actually be then behind a fence, they would exit out the building through that door into the tent, if it was raining. And again, this is only in this situation where we have...
Yeah.
Bad weather.
Okay. Questions or comments for Jamie?
I think it seems like a good plan.
Yeah. Okay, so we need a motion?
I just, so I just have a question. Candy, do we have a written proposed amendment?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Does it include a descrip, oh, here it is, is it? Is there a sketch?
Well, there wasn't a sketch for this portion of it, because I basically just was moving it there, and just, it's, I was told it had to be fenced around the, the, no, I think I wrote in there, north edge is actually the tent itself can be anchored to the ground, so it's, it's enclosed that way. The back volleyball courts actually end up being the barrier to the, to the west, and then the east is, we double fence, and then the south is the building. So the entire area would be, you would not be able to enter this unless you went into my building.
So the premises description on the current license is the building, inside the bill, the interior of the building and the enclosed volleyball?
And the patio, right.
And the patio. And, and so the proposal is to amend the premises description in the license for
One day.
This day.
For four hours. Four to eight, is when the council is, or the day.
Okay. I'm just, okay.
Yep.
To amend the premises description for August fourth, to add to the licensed premises the following described property. How are we gonna describe it? That's what I'm looking for. So the, what, the area directly west from the volleyball courts?
Do you think, I think it's actually...
Well, it's east, that is to the east of, yes.
I'd say, I'd say, I'd say a rectangle from the edge of the existing volleyball courts, easterly towards the east boundary of the banquet facility.
It's about one of those, it's like eighty feet.
You like that?
I like maps, sketches.
I actually ended up getting a virus in, I actually don't have an office computer right now. It's really fun.
Well, so we either, we just, we just need the record to be clear as to what the amended premises description is. I like maps too, but we don't have a map tonight, so there's plenty of time.
I can draw a map. I can, I can get you a map.
Yep.
That would be...
I guess you can get feedback from the board tonight as to whether they have any concerns about this.
I'd say we approve it and ask Jamie to submit a map, a map that meets approval.
By, of the board, to meet the board's approval?
Staff.
Staff approval?
Yeah.
With the staff.
There you go.
Yeah.
Candy's approval. So the motion would be to approve the proposed... Yep, to approve, approve the proposed amendment to the premises description for August fourth only, subject to, or conditioned upon submission of a, a map showing the amended premises description that is satisfactory to...
Don't stop.
Deputy clerk, what's your title?
That'll work.
How about you?
Deputy clerk Candy Jones.
We need...
So we need that as a motion?
Okay, well, I have a question first. I was just wondering, you know, for this, just for the tent, we need to, an amendment for a day to our ordinances? Doesn't that seem...
You're not, you're not amending the ordinance, so with the alcohol licenses, you have to specify exactly what the area is where alcohol can be sold, served, and consumed? So you have, so we need a level of precision here, if you want to, or you could just say the whole property, but then the entire property's open for, the whole parking lot's open for them, so...
Now I get it.
Historically, premise descriptions are important. One got kind of forgotten about, and things just expanded greatly, so not at, not at Jamie's place, that was before Jamie's place was even there, but, you know, they're important to describe what they are.
Okay. Sounds good.
So anyone who wants to make the motion that Matt?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Further discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gotta bring a map.
I will get you a map. I'll get you a map. Sorry about that. Thank you. Sorry for the delay.
Not a problem. We're gonna be here anyhow. So that takes us back to item nine, report to committees, and item three, so back to Jeanie Carpenter, please.
Okay, so this is discussion of possible action regarding a new renewal supplemental license application. So I want to commend Candy for taking initiative to do this, because currently licensees are filling out the initial application the village requires. Every year, they want to renew their license. So she, I think this is a good, a good change. So I would make a motion that we, that we approve the revised supplemental application to be used during the renewal license process.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. On this license, there are also other questions. And people sometimes run afoul of the practice or the application process, I should say, by either forgetting to or answering them wrong. Was there any discussion, I couldn't be there that night, was there any discussion about maybe eliminating some, or eliminating all the questions, since the chief does a background check anyway?
This is when a business is renewing their liquor license.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is for a business.
I withdraw my question.
Okay.
Did you have any comments you need to make, Matt?
Well, I'm just trying, this is under nine, are we at nine B or nine A two now?
Three.
Three.
Three, okay. So did we already address two?
Yes.
And that was more responsive, I think, to Jerry's question?
Yeah, so we, we cleared that out.
I think that's been addressed.
Yeah.
So with respect to three, I don't have any further comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
You can.
Do you think I should remove the notarization on that, because they're changing all the notarization on, and as well as the operator license?
Yes, because there's a change in the law that can require people to swear, to, to sign under oath. So, yes, I would recommend that as well.
Jerry, as to your earlier question, we decided to still ask the applicant to list things within the last ten years, because the chief said he could only look up things that happened in Wisconsin.
Okay, all right.
So we decided to leave it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on the renewal supplemental license application? As proposed. So we have motion second to approve that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item four.
This is regarding the revised social host ordinance, number eighteen dash eleven. And so this was a unanimous motion coming to the village board, so I'll make this first motion, that by two-thirds vote of the board, we suspend the rules and have the first and second readings at tonight's meeting.
I'll make that motion, or, no, second it?
Yeah, just a second. Okay. So we have that motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
All right, and then I'll now make the second motion, we can discuss this, that we adopt ordinance number eighteen eleven, the revised social host ordinance.
Second.
So Matt discusses at the committee level, but pretty much our, our original ordinance was no longer meeting changed state laws, so he did some revisions that keeps us in compliance with revised state laws, and still lets us have a little bit of teeth in this area. Is that right, Matt?
On the social host, yeah, we, we actually had an ordinance in place. We weren't able to enforce it for some period of time because of a case that came out. Legislature changed it, so that we can now enforce it again, but we do need to make some changes to the penalty provisions which are reflected in the ordinance.
Questions? So we have the motion and a second to adopt ordinance number eighteen dash eleven, revised social host ordinance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item five.
All right, and now we go on to downtown parking issues. Super fun. So these are the motions that came from, like, three-hour discussion?
Great.
Okay, so the first one is I would make a motion that we place signs in the Jefferson Street parking lot with the following restrictions. Three-hour parking from eight AM to eight PM, Monday through Saturday. That's a unanimous recommendation from the committee.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so after much discussion, we decided to have this be a starting point, to see if we can get that lot opened up a little bit for patrons of those businesses on South Main, to get the employees to stop parking there, and also make sure that the new Jefferson Crossing residents aren't parking in the public spaces.
Mr. Slavvy, did you have any comments on this one?
We've heard a lot of comments from business owners and residents in the downtown. We felt this was a step that we could take quickly at a low cost. We, we think it will improve the situation for keeping parking available to customers. And if it doesn't, it's, it's easily reversed.
And just to be clear, the signage would say, three-hour parking, nine AM to nine PM, except Sundays and holidays?
It's right here, it's eight AM to eight PM, Monday through Saturday.
Right, but, but the signs themselves, don't they usually say, like, except on Sunday?
This is what the signs will say.
Oh, it will say exactly that, okay. So, but we're not accepting holidays then, either?
No, because people go to restaurants and businesses on holidays. Okay. So we want that parking lot to always be available to patrons.
Okay. Fair enough. I just wanted to clarify.
I think that was the thinking.
Yeah, that's my recollection, too.
That was what actually the business owners requested.
Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions?
Is the, uh, police department, are they okay with supervising this?
They were not excited about it, uh, but Chief Yule said that he would do his best.
He's not here tonight anyway.
Brian said, Brian said Jenny would take care of it.
Yeah, I think he said we're going to hand off a take a lead on it.
Yes, we have some young eager officers, so I'm sure we will.
Okay. I just wondered how that went, because I knew that was kind of a sticky, uh, point in the, in the past when we talked about this, so I was wondering how that went at the meeting.
So, I think Chief's comment was they will enforce it as they can, but don't expect them to be there all the time.
Okay.
Because they can't.
Yeah, and I think going back to the holiday question you had, it's a good question, but the, uh, the Jefferson Street apartments there will bring in quite a bit of family visiting for the holidays, and so that'll help keep it moving for parking too.
Mm-hmm. Good point. Be a learning experience.
Yeah, and like Mr. Slavny said, we'll see how it works. If it does great, if not, we'll change it. Okay, so we have the motion second to place signs in Jefferson Street parking lot with the following restrictions. Three-hour parking, eight AM to eight PM, Monday through Saturday. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item B.
All right, so then this addresses adding some signs in the Hitching Post parking lot and also, um, indicating some parking spaces, um, as handicapped in the northwest corner of the Village Hall parking lot. So, I'll make this motion, um, that we allow staff determined, to determine the number of handicapped accessible stalls in the Triangle Park public lot and to place two-hour public parking signs consistent with the downtown existing signs on the spaces in the Hitching Park public lot.
I'll second.
Um, so, um, if you remember, I think we talked about this earlier at the board level, about, um, creating some more handicap spots, um, in the downtown Triangle lot to accommodate some requests from downtown business owners of having, um, disabled folks not, yeah, those spots right there. We weren't sure how many, um, handicap places we could get in there, but we just basically told Jeff to figure it out.
We're, I think.
Right?
Yes, well, and the thought process right now is probably these first three spaces here, um, convert this to two, two handicap accessible spots with a, uh, the, they call that, I forget what they call that, the free zone in between and everything that would be in that location. So, it would be banned accessible and then, um, we would lose one parking space, but it could probably be accommodated in these three right here.
And then the other part of the motion addresses, um, some signs that are in the parking lot that's across from Pizza Pit. Um, we wanted to make sure the public knows that the, the parallel parking spots are actually public spots, and so we were going to put a sign on that light pole right there that says public parking, two hours. It seemed like a inexpensive fix to the problem.
Actually, I don't think those will be, uh, those probably won't be, uh, we didn't have those time, time restricted, I don't think.
Oh, or whatever, I mean.
It'd just be public parking.
Yeah, public parking, yeah, sorry.
Unless I didn't remember something right there.
I thought it was two hour in here.
Oh, no, it does, yeah, it does say two hour.
I thought that was what we had.
Yeah.
It said two hour consistent with the existing downtown.
Okay.
Yeah, so whatever the rest of them say downtown.
Okay.
They wanted to.
It's just I don't think, I don't think we have two-hour parking in Hitching Post Park. That's the, that's the only reason I was.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Thinking differently there. The only two-hour parking we have right now is on South Main Street from the five-point intersection down past Maria's and Ziggy's over there.
Oh, okay. That's a good point. I guess I'd be fine with them just saying public parking then.
I mean, that's the main goal, right?
Yeah.
So that people know that that's public somewhere.
Yep.
I'll second the amended motion if that's what's happening.
Yeah.
Yes.
You got that, Candy?
So, just to place parking signs consistent with downtown, just remove the two hour?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay, so further discussion on that motion, a second?
Was there any discussion, there's one stall on North Main Street that's right out in front of.
We did talk about that, but we thought with making those spots, um, handicap accessible, that it would, it would address Fran's concerns and.
Okay.
And, and she didn't say, she was here and she didn't say the other way. It sounded like she was happy with making those spots handicapped accessible in the Triangle lot.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, that seems like a great spot for her business.
Yeah.
To have those be handicapped. That's what she needs, yeah. Further discussion? So, all in favor, the motion is proposed, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item C.
All right, and then, um, Vandoal prepared a parking initiative for us, and so the committee, um, is making a motion that we proceed with task one, which is wayfinding to, um, implement wayfinding signage, and that will be in the amount, the cost will be seventy-nine hundred dollars. And, um, we talked about having the remaining tasks completed in twenty nineteen. And the funding would come from the twenty eighteen planning budget for task one. So, that was my motion.
Second.
Thank you.
We also think some of these tasks will be able to be handled, um, if and when we hire a full-time planner. Do some of these inhales.
Yeah. So, questions or comments on this? So, we have motion a second to, uh, proceed with task one from Vandoal, the wayfinding signage from Vandoal's parking initiative, but cost proposal in the amount of seventy-nine hundred dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item six.
Uh, this next motion comes unanimous from the committee, so I would move, uh, that we approve increasing part-time police secretary position weekly hours from nineteen hours to thirty-two hours effective July twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, for a new employee.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I assume there are funds in the budget for this?
I don't know. Do you want to answer the question?
I wasn't a part of the meeting, so.
There's, there's, there's some savings, um, cost savings, um, for the position being vacant for, um, for three months.
Okay.
When we asked Chief Yule the question, he said he would find the funds.
He'd find the funds.
Yeah.
So, a majority of it will be covered by that, and then there's a small portion, and I think it says in here somewhere that, um, depending on how the, how the police department budget ends up for the year, they may or may not need, um, like, twenty-two hundred dollars out of contingency to cover the remaining part if this position were to start November first, and this person starting would take family health insurance. That's like the maximum amount that it would cost.
Okay, twenty nineteen, then it'll just be fully funded in budget.
Yes, it will be levied for.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we have the motion second to approve increasing the part-time police secretary positions, weekly hours from nineteen to thirty-two, effective July twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, for the new employee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Um, and then item eights, we had a discussion, uh, about the village hiring a full-time village planner, and so I'll make this motion, uh, that we approve the hiring of a full-time village planner, and funding comes from twenty nineteen budget. Is that correct? I think so.
Yes.
Yes. So, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Um, and we just, we remarked that, um, we thought Mike had written a very good memo, um, describing what this person would be doing, um, and the Village of Oregon is getting to the size that this is something that we need at this point. Some strategic, someone who looks at strategic planning full-time.
Yeah. Just briefly about this, um, because Mike and I have worked on this and looked at this, um, we're, what we'll be doing in the twenty nineteen budget plan is actually showing how we can incorporate this into our, into the next year's budget and where the funding for that will come from. There is a portion of this that will actually, a portion of this person's, um, salary or, you know, cost to the village that will actually be borne on the shoulders of developers and those who are coming in, um, just like we pass on costs now, and we've made a fairly , uh, conservatively low estimate of what that would be, but, uh, the, from the committee, um, really felt strongly that this is going to allow us to be able to more efficiently handle development. It's also going to take off some of the responsibilities from Mike and I's shoulders where we're falling behind with this.
Yeah, according to the, the memo, the, the estimated billable hours would cover more than seventy-five percent of the salary.
Yeah.
So, um, with all the things going on right now in the village, it kind of seems like a no-brainer.
And to be clear, that we would still continue to use Vandoal for, for, uh, things. We're not getting rid of Mike Slavny any, anytime soon, um, but, and Mike's, Mike's helped, Mike, Mike and Mike has helped, uh, kind of work through this process as well.
Yeah, and for those of us who've been on the board a long time, this has been before us off and on different times too, as you know, you can try number two to do this stuff. And we've hit that growth point now where it's, uh, more important to have, I think, so.
Yeah.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, so we have the motion a second to approve hiring a full-time village planner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, uh, next, item B, memorandum of understanding committee for building new library. I'm on that with Jeannie. Do you want to take that or you want me to?
Um, you can.
That's not.
I have planning next, so you can do this one.
I know. You're on a good roll there, keep going. So, uh, the minutes from May eighth to two thousand and eighteen meeting, and then the recommendation from the July tenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, um, is the information regarding this, uh, capital campaigns is included in the packet, and if approved, the seventy-five hundred dollar funding request would come from the contingency fund. So, basically, um, it was kind of a guess of how much it would cost for a consultant for the fundraising. Uh, the guess was ten thousand. Uh, the library board, the village board agreed to split that at five thousand apiece. Uh, that has come in at about twenty-five thousand, so this is an extra seventy-five hundred dollars, uh, that would be covered by the village board if we approve this, and the library board, they have to prove their share too, to get to that twenty-five thousand dollars. The MOU committee was, uh, completely in favor of this, so, um, I would bring that as a motion, and do we have a second for that?
I'll second that for discussion.
Thank you. So, we're at discussion.
When you say it was, uh, approved, is it unanimous?
Yeah.
All parties approved that?
Yeah.
Okay, and then where will the extra money come from in the village side?
Uh, contingency fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Basically, it's necessary for the fundraising to go on. For ten thousand dollars, you don't get anything. That's what it boils down to.
Yeah, 'cause I understand it, and I've discussed this with other, with Mike, I guess, is that this is kind of a standard practice now.
Yeah.
To hire a consultant to help you estimate your fundraising.
Yeah.
So that you don't, uh, blow it, so to speak.
Yeah.
When you make your estimate.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so any further discussion or questions? Uh, so basically, the motion a second for the village board to contribute another seventy-five hundred dollars toward the capital campaign for the library. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Now, we'll go back to item C, planning commission from July twelve, two thousand and eighteen, and that goes back to trustee Carpenter.
So, I think, um, I think this first item has been, gonna be tabled to August sixth, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, so we'll skip item one. Uh, item two, uh, this is discussion on possible action regarding improving ordinance eighteen oh nine to adopt amendments to the two thousand and four Village of Oregon Comprehensive Plan. And for those watching, the Comprehensive Plan sets the policy for the growth, development, and preservation of the community. The proposed amendments would affect the future land use map in the Comprehensive Plan document. So, here are the proposed amendments. Um, we have two parcels on the west side of Thompson Drive that are proposed to be amended from planned business to two-family residential. We have the Ticey property at two eighty-one West Netherwood Street proposed to be amended from light industrial to planned mixed use. We have the Hermsen property in the Town of Oregon, west of the village, on Netherwood Road, proposed to be amended from planned neighborhood to parks and open space. We have changes to reflect final plats for Oregon Parks Edition, Highlands at Netherwood and Autumn Ridge. We have changes to reflect, um, changes in existing development, and we are adding workforce housing language to the plan. So, I'll make this first motion, um, I would move that by two-thirds vote of the board, we suspend the rules and have the first and second readings at tonight's meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries?
And then my second motion is, um, that we can, that we adopt ordinance eighteen oh nine, changing adopt amendments to the two thousand and four Village of Oregon Comprehensive Plan.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion, questions?
Yeah, um, I have a question. Um, workforce housing language, um, I'm, well, I'm just concerned about the term workforce because I know some people have some objections, uh, regarding that. Is it, is it too limiting? Do people have to be working to, to use this housing? What, what's the purpose of that particular language that we're using?
Mike.
That, that language is used in, uh, federal and state statutes, and it implies a, a level of, of housing cost that would be equivalent to, uh, potential residents that would need some subsidy, um, but not a full subsidy for their housing needs. So, um, those residents do tend to be employed, um, but it is, this term is more related to the level of funding assistance than it is to an absolute requirement to be employed.
Okay. As long, as long as that's the case, I just would want some wiggle room there for people who might be on disability or, you know, like, might need affordable housing that, that aren't working because they can't.
Exactly.
So, if they would qualify the, for that level of subsidy, then that's fine.